All righty, good morning. We will be, I'll call our commission meeting for Tuesday, December 8th to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Again, welcome to our meeting. We have meeting documents in the binder next to Commissioner Heiburger. And if you please set your cellphone to stun, that would be appreciated. And if you need a listening device, we have those available. Just raise your hand. Carol Muller can get that for you. We'll begin with considering a motion to approve our agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second. Motion in a second. Roll call vote.
Barf?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Harski?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We will move on to item two. Approve the commission meeting minutes for Tuesday, December 1st. Roll call, motion?
Moved.
Second. Motion by Barth, second by Benega. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barf?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Harski?
Aye. That motion also passes. We have bills to be paid in the amount of $954,188.35.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Right.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please. And before we do that, any comments?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I like it when we have Jean running things. So I noticed that in today's bills, we have $193,000 that went to metro communication and $328,000 that went to two different bridges. So that takes up actually the bulk of our bills today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Always want our citizens to have safe roads to travel on. Roll call vote.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Harski?
Aye.
Barf?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. All righty. We have reports from the highway monthly construction projects updates, the auditor's account with the county treasurer for August and September of 2020. Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment that the treasurer's office continues to try to catch up with their reconciliation of their bank accounts. And we are up to September of 2020. At one point, we were, I believe, over a year behind in our bank reconciliation. So we're happy to see that they're moving forward on that.
It is good to see. Item five, personnel actions. Need to consider a motion to approve routine personnel. Morning, Carrie. So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Carrie, comment, or do we do a vote first?
No comments on these. They're routine.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Barf?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Harski?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Special personnel actions.
This one I do have a comment on. This is a special request to approve a temporary additional duty salary adjustment for Kim Adamson in the auditor's office. She's our finance and budget officer, and she'll be assisting with supervision and oversight starting November 30th through December 31st. So we're asking for a four-step increase for her in representation of those duties.
While our current auditor is basically convalescing for the most part. So, yep. So, comments, questions? Would make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barf?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Harski?
Aye. That passes unanimously. Now we'll go into a discussion for fiscal year 21 salaries for the sheriff, the state's attorney, the register of deeds, the auditor, and the treasurer, basically all of our elected department heads or officials.
That's right. During the budget process for 2021, the commission discussed and put in 2% in those payroll adjustments for the elected officials, knowing that you would have a conversation later in the year about what you actually wanted to go ahead and propose. This year is somewhat unusual in that you have three new department heads who'll be coming in as well. I'm giving you very similar information than in the past. The resolution, you might recall, includes two sections. One sets up the base salaries for all of these elected officials. So if that position were to become vacant in the year, or someone was running for office, they would know what the base salary was. So before I go into that, I'm looking for guidance, or go into the next section about actual salaries, I'm looking for guidance on whether or not you want to adjust the base salaries. It's just some background information. What we've used in general for the base salaries is the base of a pay grade 24 for the register of deeds, the treasurer, and the auditor. And then a base of a pay grade 26 for the sheriff. And last year, we used $130,000 for the state's attorney. If you're okay with that same approach for next year, I'll go ahead and draft the resolution using those figures. If you want to discuss something different, I'd be looking for your feedback.
Questions?
I'm okay with the base rate because we're going to go, just go up from there, so.
Yeah. These are just setting the minimum in case we should lose somebody throughout the years, or something happens. We have to do this by statute, by state statute. So we have our minimum set. It really has no basis in where any of these elected officials' salary, salaries are at, so.
That's correct. This is just the base. But if you're comfortable with that, that does bring us to the next discussion about what do you want to set as the salaries for your five elected department heads for 2021. I've given you similar information, again, to look at and helping you review. And some of the things that you've taken in consideration in the past is salaries of other department heads. We look at market data because those elected officials are often fairly market-driven. We look at market data from our comparable organizations. So we collect for the auditor, the registered deed treasurer, sheriff, state's attorney, to give you market data. And Trish, if I could have you go down just a little bit further on this. And one more maybe. Thanks. This is just the historical for you so you get a sense of what adjustments have been over the past several years. Sometimes it's been an across-the-board increase for everybody. Sometimes it's been varied. And then if we go to the next slide, what I'm giving you is a listing of all of your current non-elected department head salaries as of July 1st, 2021. So this will give you a sense of equity with your other department heads. And just as a reminder, that second to last column has grade and step that they're at at the end of the year. Just as a reminder, some of, anyone who is not at a 16 still is eligible to receive a step increase in the year. And a step increase is about 2.5%. And if we can go down one more. This is a good summary of what the current salaries are. In that first light blue column, the current salaries for each of those elected officials. The yellow columns give you a sense of what the comparable organization's data is, both the salary for the incumbent in that second column, as well as their ranges. Couple points with this. Again, this is 2020 data. So all of those other organizations are doing what you're doing right now and looking at increases for their elected officials as well. So if you just use this and use this to determine it, you're probably going to be lagging market a little bit. The other thing I want to say about this is it's not an easy apples-to-apples comparison. With the state's attorney and the sheriff, we have several market points, a lot of people. But when you get into the auditor, the treasurer, register of deeds, some of our comparable organizations might have slightly different roles for those. So you can see that this is a guide for you, but I wouldn't take it as strict rule of where we should necessarily be. The last two columns gives you a sense of where the deputies in each of those offices will be at during the year. So you'll see for the state's attorney, for example, that last column shows $131,789. That's where the deputy is as of January 1st, 2021. And of course, that person would be eligible for an increase during the year, too. So it's a lot of information, but it gives you some market, gives you some equity, gives you some sense of where other department heads are at, too. So hopefully can help you as you start to make a decision. The one last thing I would say about market, what you lose there, too, is you have no real sense of, are you comparing to other elected officials who've been in office for 20 years, or somebody who's been there for one or two years? So again, it's a guide, something for you to look at.
All righty. Thank you, Carrie. Questions from the commissioners? Are we expected to set these salaries today? Go ahead, Commissioner Barth.
Are we looking to make the decision today?
Yes. Our hope is to have feedback from you today so that we can bring back the resolution for formal approval next Tuesday.
So kind of a consensus today with the resolution to follow. Do we want to take these individually? Okay. Where would we like to start?
We already have the auditor done, so we don't have to do that one.
Okay.
And for the auditor, I should say that, go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
No, go ahead, Carrie.
For the auditor, again, we have Bennett Kite, whose resolution to appoint him, you heard last week, you'll be having an action later this month about his salary, since he'll actually be starting a few days before this resolution would be effective. And the salary for your consideration at that time will be $1,114,400. But that won't actually be in front of you until later this month.
Okay.
But if you're comfortable that, for that, for the continuing year as well, that's the feedback I'm looking for.
Okay. I think we are correct. So auditor on, could do this alphabetically by office. State's attorney.
Commissioner Bender?
Commissioner Bender? Commissioner Bender?
Commissioner Harski?
Oh, Commissioner Bender, yes.
Hi. So for this state's attorney, I would suggest in order to, you know, we've got a new state's attorney, but to put him just slightly above his deputy, I would suggest the starting salary of $137,000 for our new state's attorney.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Question for Carrie. Carrie, when?
Deputy will earn...
You were garbled there, Commissioner.
You can't hear me?
We can now.
Okay. I would, I would suggest for our state's attorney that we put him at $137,000. That will put him slightly above his chief deputy, who will earn $135,000, starting next May.
That was my question.
I think we're okay with that. I see heads nodding anyway. And I look at our department head of our public defender's office, and that's pretty much in line with where that individual is and comparable staff size. So I think it's a, I think that's fair. Commissioner Heiburger?
It has to be divisible by, by the month of the year. So it will be actually just a little bit more than that. I'm just looking at the sheet you gave us. That's such a good point. Thank you for bringing it up. Yes. All of, if you can give me feedback about the salaries, what I'll do between now and next Tuesday is go back, make sure they're evenly divisible, and I'll just round up to the nearest dollar to bring it back to, if that works. Okay. All right. So next, if we give you this number, you'll figure it out from there? I will. Okay. Thank you. I'm, I'm okay with that $137 number to round up to where we need to be.
Commissioner Benega? I have no problem with that. Commissioner Barth, comments?
I, Commissioner Bender is wise.
We'll leave it rest at that, then. Moving on to our sheriff. Commissioner Bender, you are the liaison there.
Yeah. Honestly, I'm going to suggest a 5% increase for both the sheriff and for Julie Ristie at the register of deeds. I know I'm getting a little out of order. But we have two really very experienced, long-term employees who I think that that raise is well-deserved by both of them and, and will also keep them in parity with their deputies and the folks around them. So I didn't do my, I didn't totally do my rough math. I think a 5% increase for the sheriff puts him, I had originally done a, it puts him like about $143,000. I didn't do my math. I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, I agree again with Commissioner Bender. The sheriff has been here for decades and deserves to be preeminent among our elected officials. And Julie Ristie, the same thing. And we never hear any problems in Julie's department. I can only assume that's because of good management.
Commissioner Benega?
Just a question, Carrie. Remind me of what the cost of living growth was, or the growth of the budget was 1.8%, plus we had additional property values of about 3%, which brought it to 4.8%. Is that close to the?
You know, I can't remember exactly where that was at. Carol, do you?
I've, I've forgotten, to be honest. It's been a while. But I think it was around. It's nice to tie payroll increases to revenue increases. And I think that's about where we were. I'm close, I think, to where that was. So I would be comfortable with that. I think we have to have something that's parallel with revenue change.
So you're proposing?
Well, a 5% would be close enough.
Okay.
But I'm just thinking that, I want to make sure I'm right on the numbers, but I think that's pretty close.
And I apologize. I'm not, I can't recall what figures were presented in budget on those two areas specifically.
And I'm fine with that also. Sheriff Milstead's done a fantastic job. And he, by far, he probably has close to half the county employees working for him. So, you know, just what he does and the number of people that are under him, I think it's definitely deserved.
I had a very, very challenging year. Yep. 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 So, so we're at, set at five, then, for the resolution? Okay. I'm fine with that. And our last office, we have a new treasurer that's going to be sworn in first of the year. Where do we want to start her audit?
Last year, the treasurer was paid $90,000. Our minimum's $86,000. Commissioner Bender?
Since I'm being the bossy one here apparently today, I, I think I would be in favor of starting our treasurer at the proposed minimum for that position. It's a new, she's new to the position, doesn't bring in a tremendous amount of experience in that position. And then that will give us an opportunity to move her up the pay scale as, as she learns that position and we get an opportunity to evaluate her, her skills in that area. I'm very optimistic. I think she's going to do great in that position. I just think that's a good place to start.
Commissioner Heiburger?
And she's significantly above her deputy assistant in that office at this point. And I, and I think that's, I think that's true. I think we'll be able to evaluate how she's doing and move her up. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay with starting her there.
I'm comfortable with that. Commissioner Barth?
I'm on board here.
Okay. I feel we have consensus there, then. So we know where everybody's salaries will be for the elected officials. Thank you, Carrie.
Thanks for your feedback. I'll prepare the resolution and bring it before you next Tuesday.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, let me just say that as the county commissioner, it seems like my salary should be just a little higher than Carol Muller's.
Good thing we're not voting on that today.
Yeah.
All righty. We will move on. Our abatements recommended for approval, we have none. Notice and requests, we have none. Planning and zoning notices, there are, are not any. And petition for compromises of lien, there are none. Now we go to our opportunity for public comment. Is anybody here for public comment?
There's a gentleman behind the post.
Oh, good to see him. Good morning, sir. If we could just have your name, please?
Terry Denniston. You want me to take this off so you can understand me?
That's fine. You can, you can take it off if you're more comfortable to talk to.
Looking for some assistance or guidance, explanation on nuisance ordinance.
Can you pull the microphone towards you a little bit so we can hear you?
Stand a little bit closer.
There you go.
I'm looking for some assistance or guidance on, explanations on nuisance ordinance. Live out north of town. In 2018, we got some new neighbors, build a new house just to the south of us, uphill from us. And I'm, I'm not opposed to horses. I got my first horse when I was three years old. Owned him for most of the next 40 years. I was recovering from knee surgery that summer and realized our neighbor was collecting their manure and park, and piling it near the property line, as far away from their house as they could get it, and almost as close to our house as it could possibly be, which is about 180 feet. And when I was growing up, my grandpa taught me, you don't put your outhouse or your poop pile next to your neighbor, you're going to have problems. That was a common law back then. Apparently, you've got it as written law now. They kept piling the manure up. I didn't know it was law at the time. I did some research, found out that there's a nuisance ordinance. Went to zoning and planning, and they printed this out for me. I think it was in September of that year. And I met with the neighbor, and she asked him, you know, if they could please move that thing some farther away, that it was violating the ordinance and just plain good neighbor policies. And she refused. Claimed that her manure did not attract flies or rodents or any other kind of vermin. It didn't smell, and it didn't wash downhill when it rained. After that, I didn't see any reason to press the point with the neighbor directly. So I went to the planning and zoning office to ask for some help there. I didn't hear anything from them for a month approximately. So I wasn't writing this down. I didn't, I thought it'd be taken care of. So I'm just going from memory. I didn't hear anything from them. I called them up. I talked to somebody named Kevin in the office, who's the one that printed this out for me. And he said he met with his boss, and they decided that the neighbor had, had the right to do that so they could fully enjoy their property. They come up with some sort of agreement where the neighbor was supposed to be turning this into compost and selling it at a later date. And that they would be required to do a few things, like turning it on a regular basis. Well, they, from what I could see, they were just kept piling it up and making it taller and bigger. And it kept washing down every time it rained. Anytime the, the wind was coming from a southerly direction, I got a full whiff of it. And like I said, I, I grew up with horses. Didn't bother me. But the amount of rodents that were getting into my buildings was greatly increased when that pile came into existence. I finally called back to the zoning office, and they said the neighbors could go ahead and do that and keep doing that. Well, the, in 2019, the neighbor lady that was doing this apparently left the family, took the horses, and the manure pile remained. I didn't want to press it with the, the husband. He was raising kids and working a lot of hours, and he had very little to do with horses, anyway. So I thought maybe something could get done. But I was not aware I could come and talk to this group here directly. When I talked to the planning and zoning guy on the phone, he said, well, they have the right to enjoy their property to the fullest extent. I said, what about me? He said, well, if you don't like it, hire a lawyer. This doesn't say I need to hire a lawyer, lawyer to have a, an ordinance enforced. The minimum distance, according to this, is 300 feet, and they were about 180. Property changed hands this spring. And we got new neighbors who brought another horse. And these are not, these, these people are not from town. They're from the country. They owned a livestock operation. I assumed they would know what they should be doing with the manure. But maybe there was some communication between the two parties that said, we have a, the selling party might have told them, or real estate person might have told them that there's a agreement with the county that they could do that. And it just keeps piling up and piling up. I'm tired of the pile. I don't know what the new neighbors know. They don't seem to be all that outgoing and friendly with the neighbors. And if you can't get along with my next-door neighbor, you really can't get along with anybody. I can understand why somebody doesn't get along with me sometimes. My wife says I'm not very diplomatic at times. But I would like to see this done. I would like to suggest that the people in that office that allowed this to happen be responsible for it. And if there's any fines that they would have levied against the people who started it, maybe they should pay me that fine amount because they allowed it to happen. And...
I missed your last name, sir. Can you?
Denniston.
Dennison?
Denniston. Only ones in the county.
Okay. Did you get that? Okay. Commissioner Barth, you're the liaison to the zoning office, planning and zoning. Would you mind kind of taking?
You want me to, I talked to him on the phone.
Right, if you wouldn't mind. Sir, what is your street address? Is it 255?
Yes. 475.
Okay, I've been out there. I have been out there with staff, and I will review it with them again.
You didn't talk to me.
And certainly, I appreciate you coming in today and diplomatically bringing it forward. I'll, I'll see where we're at with it. And I'm sorry that it's such an irritant to you, but it may or may not be an issue. And it may have become an issue since I was out there. But I was out there with the, with the director of the planning department. And it's been a, more than a year, maybe two years, it seems to me. So I'll have to look into it. But if you would give your phone number to staff, I'll, I'll get back to you.
All right.
And if, I'm sure if he doesn't, we'll hear from you. But I'm going to, I'm going to trust that Commissioner Barth can work with you on this and, and our, our planning office and see what we can do to bring resolution.
Well, since, since we were the one, the party that's not being able to enjoy our property fully, why they didn't talk to me, I don't understand.
We'll find out for you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Carol, can you get a phone number? Got it already? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Anybody else here for public comment? All righty. We'll move on to our regular business. We have to consider a motion to authorize our equalization office to use fiscal year 2020 surplus funds to replace an '03 Chevy truck. Chris Low, Director of Equalization, welcome.
Good morning, commissioners. Yes, before you, I'm coming today. We've got a 2003 Chevy truck that we acquired from the highway department as a surplus vehicle for them a number of years ago, 2014. We've used it. We've limped it along, but I'm afraid it has hit its end of life. As you can see, I've provided some photos of the vehicle. Obviously, photos, vehicle's in pretty tough shape, shape externally, but it had always been pretty mechanically sound until this year, when the driver's side floorboard, if you look at the last photo, literally rusted through. There's a hole under the floor mat. I think it's one more down.
Yeah.
That's lifting up the floor mat. There's a hole. You can see pavement. And that is a major safety concern for us, as well as this thing now is needing four tires, which, again, we would have replaced tires. But as of October, we presume the head gasket is out of it. If it runs 10 minutes, it's overheating. And I do not want to put money into it. So... So we kind of scrambled and looked at our budget. I've got the, the state bid paperwork from DJ Boothey, where we can acquire another Chevy Equinox, a new one with warranty and all of that, for about twenty-two thousand, two hundred dollars. I've reviewed our budget. It looks like we are going to have an excess of that amount in surplus remaining from our FY '20 budget, so I'm asking for your permission and authorization to go ahead and, and contact Billions for a state contract bid and use the funds from this year. I have also, pending your approval of this, I have submitted a memo to the auditor's office to request. I don't have, I may need to go into my salary and benefit lines a little bit. Currently, I had twenty-seven thousand in the lines I control, and I had another twenty-five thousand in salary and benefits. So I have submitted that memo, as that request had to be in as of yesterday, in the event that you did approve this, so.
Questions from the Commission? I would make a motion to approve the replacement of the 2003 Chevy truck with the state bid.
He seconded it.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Yeah, definitely for the safety of staff, if nothing else, so. Roll call vote, please. Aye. Excuse me.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
With that there, I would just like to mention to you, I've got one more vehicle that would probably be in line next. However, it's in good mechanical shape right now. It's a 2007 Durango that we also acquired from the highway department. If that can make us three, four more years, we're going to be good. Beyond that, the rest of our vehicle fleet now is sitting in pretty good standing, and, and some of them are just coming off a warranty. So, well, we maintain them pretty well, and we're kind of weeding out the, the bad ones as we go here. And this one just didn't make it across the finish line, so I thank you, Commissioners.
Can't accuse us of not squeezing the last bit of life out of a vehicle, can you? All righty. Authorize the chair to sign a bridge replacement funding agreement with the State Department of Transportation for Structure 50-290-131. DJ Boothey, are you out there?
Yeah, I'm here on Zoom, Commissioners. Good morning, DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This agenda item and the following agenda item are for two structures that we applied for what's called the Local Federal Bridge Replacement Funding, a grant that was made available using federal dollars to replace bridges throughout South Dakota on county and, and municipal systems. We were successful for these two bridges, and this one in particular, expect, expected construction cost and design cost is a total of four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The way that the federal grant is written, there is a eighty-one point nine five percent slash eighteen point zero five percent cost share mechanism. The state legislature in South Dakota, earlier this year, passed a law that, that provided for about four million dollars, I think, to pay that eighteen point zero five percent cost share portion for the local governments. This funding agreement spells out how that will work and, and acknowledges that if there's any expenditures that don't comply with the federal grant program, that anyhow county is responsible for those, those costs. So with that, I will stand by for any questions.
Questions for DJ. Commissioner Barth?
DJ, yes. DJ, I really appreciate you having the map because when I'm on Zoom, I don't have all the resources that I have when I'm at my, my position at the podium there. I, there I have a map that shows these structures, and I was just kind of stewing about it earlier today. I don't, I did not know where this bridge was, and your map here shows me. I really appreciate it.
You bet. I will let Jacob know. He, he's the one that put together this memo today, so I will let him know. Thank you.
Any others? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second by Commissioner Barth. Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 Passes unanimously. All righty, so, Consider a Resolution to Update the Fee Structure for Highway Access Permits.
I think we missed twelve. Did we miss item twelve?
Did I miss twelve?
I think we missed item twelve.
Yep, okay, let's back it up. Authorize the chair to sign a bridge replacement funding agreement with the State Department of Transportation for Structure 50-208-130. Very similar to number eleven.
This is the exact same verbiage within this agreement, just for the other structure that was awarded as part of that grant program. I'll make a motion to approve this proposal.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Now we will do item thirteen. Consider a Resolution to Update the Fee Structure for Highway Access Permits. DJ.
All right, Commissioners, in 2012, we established a permit system, a formal permit system for highway access permits, and established fees along with that, that formal process. We did not update them in 2016, along with some of the other permits that we updated. And so this resolution is to update the permits that were, permits and fees that were established in 2012. There's five different types. There's a temporary access. There's widening an existing approach. There's a farm field approach, a residential access, and commercial and industrial access. The first four of those five were just increasing the fee by five dollars each. And then the commercial industrial access were increasing by twenty-five dollars, from one hundred and fifty dollars to one hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that's just because there's a lot more involvement on, for the staff to be able to process that and make sure that there's compliance with various standards that we have for the roadways. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions. Otherwise, requesting the authorization for the chairperson to sign the resolution.
All righty.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Barth?
Yes, DJ, are we choosing the, the costs on these particular items based on what our costs are? Or are we just sort of saying we haven't raised these in a while, and we should raise them? I'm just wondering what our cost is and how it might be calculated to allow a residential access, for example.
Sure, that's a good question. So with the other permit types that we have, for example, the overweight or the utility permits that we're going to discuss in the next agenda item, we do try to, try to equalize the fee structure to what it generally costs for us for our labor and equipment, if equipment is required. For this particular permit, we don't typically do, we don't do that because unlike the other permit types, this permit is generally paid by a landowner as opposed to a business or a contractor, and so we're trying to be respectful of that. So a farm field approach or residential access, the existing permits are fifty dollars and seventy-five dollars respectively. We probably spend two hundred dollars worth of labor to process those, but it just seems like that would be a little bit excessive for somebody when, when they're already paying usually for a building permit to build a house or platting fees to, to develop, or to subdivide a property, that kind of thing. So with this permit, in particular, we, we don't break even. We're just trying to make it more economical for the landowners. Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 That motion passes unanimously. In retrospect, I'm going to just put a comment out there. Yep. Approaches and access from county roads, I mean, it's just a necessary thing that we be able to manage and control that and have a, have a good idea of what's going on. And it doesn't come without a cost, and it's, you know, a very small way for the landowner to share in that cost of doing it. So it's a tough one, but I, I understand the need to do it, so. All right, number fourteen. Consider a Resolution to Update the Highway Utility Guidebook and Fees. DJ.
All right, Commissioners, this one is a, a little bit different of an animal than the last agenda item. This permit is a lot more complex. There's a guidebook that goes along with the permit application, and, and the fees are a little bit higher. The increase is a little bit higher for this as well. We still probably don't break even on the majority of these, the permits that, or the, the fees that are listed in this permit. But because of the complexities that we see throughout the application process, and, and this also requires a pretty extensive inspection process, the fee structure was changed a little bit more than what the access permit fees were. This was initially started in 2015, and so it has been quite a few years since we, we've updated this one. In 2020, we processed seventy-one permits so far for utility permits, and this one is, takes a considerable amount of time with at least one, maybe probably two of our technicians that we have on staff here. But I expect there might be some questions about this permit, and so I'll stand by for some questions.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Barth?
DJ, could you explain, what is a hazardous utility? Is it electrical only or gas? What else is a hazardous utility?
Typically, pressurized gas line, or if, in the case of oil, we've got one pipeline that we've processed a permit for an oil pipeline through the county.
Okay, now, once they get this, this permit from us, if we need them to move it because we're reconstructing the road, do they bill us, or do they let us have them move it for free?
If it's within the, the right of way, it's the utility's responsibility to, to pay those costs. And if it's in, if it's in private property or in easement outside of the right of way, but we still need to have that utility moved because of a realignment of the roadway, then it would be our cost.
And those are pretty high when we need those things moved. I mean, tens of thousands of dollars.
Certainly, they can be, yeah.
Other comments, questions, motions?
Commissioner Benega, or Bender, I would make a motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call vote, please. Aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, DJ.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Barth?
I'd like to mind the, the costs that we pay those utilities to move their stuff. And they, maybe over the next year, you could keep a, some idea of what we're spending on moving utilities. Appreciate it very much.
Did you get that, DJ?
I think I did. I missed the first part, but it sounds like there was a request of, a summary of how much we pay to relocate utilities?
Yeah, going forward. You don't need to go back, but, you know, in 2021, if we, if we are relocating utilities, what are we spending on that?
Do you do an annual?
And we do keep, we do keep track of those costs on a per project basis, and I can, I can give you historical and for 2021 as well, moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty. Moving on, we have two resolutions on special event alcoholic beverage licenses. Olivia, good morning.
Good morning, Olivia Larson, Auditor's Office. Before you, I have two resolutions for your consideration. The first one is a resolution for establishing the rules for regulating and restricting the issuance of-
I want to hang on one second.
Yeah, sorry.
An art here.
No problem.
Sound of freedom. Right, more background noise than Tony can deal with, too, over there, so.
No problem.
There's a lot of them, or it's very large?
Yeah. That's crazy.
Very large. And it's fading. All righty, go ahead, Olivia.
No problem. So the first resolution is to establish the rules for regulating and restricting the issuance of consume and blend alcohol beverage licenses pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 35-15.5. So this first resolution is actually new. I drafted it and had the state's attorney's office review it, and suggestions were provided, and those were, were added. So what this will do is it will hopefully reduce the level of confusion regarding these specific types of licenses, since there was no provision for it in our previous resolutions. And then also, it will just provide written documentation that can be seen not only by us at the auditor's office, but then also the public.
Okay, thanks, Olivia. Questions? I guess I have one. Does this change or create any new fees?
This does not, no.
Okay, so it's just kind of cleanup, for lack of a better term, of our existing so that we, nothing falls through the cracks?
Right.
Okay, okay. We'll take them individually, I believe. Motion one, a resolution establishing the rules for regulating and restricting the issuance of consume and blend alcohol beverage license pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 35-1-5.5. Roll call, or a motion, please. Over for approval?
Second. Second.
Motion and a second. Go ahead, Olivia.
Hi, Berger?
Hi.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion is approved unanimously. And second part of that, resolution amending the rules for regulating and restricting the issuance of special event alcohol beverage license pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 35-4-124/35-4-125. Is there a difference, I guess, what the statutes are doing, or what are we?
There is. So the first resolution that you approved was consume and blend, which means that they're providing alcohol, but they cannot sell it. This resolution provides for special events where people are selling alcoholic beverages. So, and this would actually update the current resolution that's in place, which is MC 17-16. And what we're doing here is we're just updating statute references. For example, in MC 17-16, the statute referenced in item one was 35-426. And then we needed to add four, as well as 35-4-111. And this was reviewed by the state's attorney's office, and they did suggest changes, and all of those were added and included. So we should have the proper references in there now. And then along with that, we've also addressed issues, excuse me, brought forward by Commissioner Barth in previous meetings regarding canceled events and then, and license that's already been issued, and if they have a violation in that time period, if we can rescind it, that sort of thing. So that is taken care of in Sections 10 and 16 of the proposed resolution. And then the last item of note would be that Sections five through seven address what to do in the case that alcoholic beverages are donated to, for example, a civic or charitable entity for the purpose of selling the alcohol for fundraising. So.
Good. Great explanation. Thank you, Olivia. Questions? Motion? Commissioner, I have one question. On Sections five through seven, Olivia, do they have to show proof of IRS nonprofit status?
Currently, it's not listed on the application, but we can certainly add that.
I think there's times where that would be appropriate.
Yeah, no problem. I'll just make a note that we add that to the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comment, motion? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Roll call vote, please.
Hi Berger?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, Olivia. Moving on to 16, Consider a Resolution to Approve Inserting Covenant Language Into the Deed for the County-Owned Gravel Pit. Carol Muller?
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. For many decades, Minnaha County has owned a parcel of land west of Sioux Falls, location at 46686263rd Street, Ellis, South Dakota. On that property has, on the southern end of it, has been a gravel pit, and on the northern end of it, has been the shooting range that the sheriff manages. Do you want me to wait a minute?
Alrighty.
Little bit shorter airplane.
Yeah.
Up there. Anyway, the commission, on November 17th, declared that gravel pit to be surplus property and will be put on auction in January. So, as part of that, we recognize that the north, just directly north of the gravel pit, is a shooting range that is very well-used. The sheriff's office takes care of it, is heavily used by not only the sheriff's office, but many other first responders and law enforcement agencies in southeastern South Dakota. We wanted to make sure that that continues without any issues. As a matter of fact, when we first started this discussion, my first call was to the sheriff, and I said, "Do you have any concerns about this?" And the one thing we talked about was making sure that the, the shooting range would be able to continue uninterrupted, and as part of that, you are changing language in the deed that states that the covenant acknowledges the continued operation of the shooting range, and also requires the owner to acknowledge that the shooting range may cause noise and other inconveniences as a normal occurrence, and the owner agrees to make no claims against the county for operating the shooting range. So attached to that, you have a resolution that includes the specific language that would be inserted into the deed if the commission votes to approve the resolution. I would add that from the state's attorney's office, Drew DeGroot and Judy Warecamp both worked on this, and I know Drew is here and probably would be available to answer any technical questions that you may have about it. But for your consideration today is to consider this motion to approve the resolution to insert covenant language into the gravel pit deed.
Questions for Carol? How many acres do we own? How many acres is the shooting range, and how much, how many acres are we getting rid of? Do you know that?
I do not have the map in front of me, so I would not-
Okay, okay.
I would not offer a very, a, a good guesstimate on that.
Other questions? Commissioner Benega?
When the gravel pit's sold, and if a developer buys that gravel pit, are we going to request that the sheriff's department, or that frankly, the developer maybe fence that off if we need to?
I would ask Drew if we hadn't, was that any part of a conversation at all? No, that was not part of a discussion.
It's going to have to be a way to keep those separate, I would assume. You don't want them going back and forth, obviously. There's some liability, I would think, there on the county's behalf.
I think that's a great point. You'll have a gravel pit operation, obviously, and a shooting range adjacent to each other, how do you separate them? And is that part of the, you know, who, who should keep who out of where, so? Might be something that is negotiated between the purchaser and the sheriff's office, but it is probably something that people should be aware of.
Mm-hmm.
Should be something we talk about.
We'll make note of that and have further discussion on that, if that is something that is desired to be brought back, brought forward before the auction, or if that would be part of the terms of that.
Should probably be clarified before we sell it.
Thank you.
Okay. Right now, we have a motion?
Nope, we don't. I'll make a motion.
We don't have a motion. We have a motion, I need a second.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. We need a roll call vote.
Aye.
Barth?
Was that me? I couldn't hear. Well, yeah, of course, I bore it.
Hi Berger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Alrighty, commissioners, thank you. Now, we are to our liaison reports. Any liaison reports?
Do both have?
Commissioner Bender?
I just would like to say that we had another meeting of the admin extension office remodel group, met with the architects last Thursday, and spent some more time talking about office standards for the county. And next Tuesday at the building committee, that will be one of the primary topics that we discuss, and I know some of the department heads have been following our discussion on that, and we are really inviting them to provide input either at the building committee meeting, or prior to the building committee meeting. It was a great discussion that we had last Thursday, lots of things to consider and think about, and, you know, some new ways of doing things for the county, but I think it will be a great, very productive conversation going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Bender. Commissioner Barth?
Well, the museum board had a meeting last week, and, you know, we had a number of contributions to the museum made. Visitation is, is a little down. That museum conference that was scheduled for last September is now going forward for this September, so we're expecting museum people to come flocking to town. But additionally, we talked about reducing the number of meetings that we have. We meet normally every month, and we're looking at possibly going to every other month. Phil Haskins will be bringing us a proposal next month when we meet.
Okay. Commissioner Berger?
Just to comment that Commissioner Karski and I will be going to PIER tomorrow for a day and a half conference, or meeting with South Dakota Association of County Commissioners' Board of Directors to finalize this year, and to look at convention plans for next year.
Alrighty. We're managing, the manager of the Link, and it's a three-year contract, worth roughly about a million and a half dollars a year, and there are certain sharing arrangements in there for both profit and loss, so that we're all kept whole as much as possible. The other thing we did was we approved, there are four board members, myself, the mayor, the presidents of Sanford and Avera, Dave Flechek and Paul Hanson. We approved a fifth board member, and that is, and I believe his last name is Hanson, and I'm probably getting it wrong, but he is with the Helmsley Charitable Trust, and has extensive experience and a background in mental, mental illness and substance use, and he'll be a valuable addition to our board, so we're excited that we added a fifth person. Our bylaws allow that, so things are moving rapidly forward. We had a announcement that Smithfield has granted $400,000 to the Link project to aid in construction, so we had a press conference for that, lightly attended due to COVID, but hopefully everybody had a chance to see it. City put it out on their Facebook Live, and the press conference is out there, so a big thank you to Smithfield for their generous contribution to a project that's just been, had legs under it for a while, but just really trying to get it opened up, so, exciting times. No other liaison reports? Any new business? Any old business? Alrighty, then I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn. It is 10:02. We will come back here at about 10:12, 10 minutes from now, so, take 10 minutes.
For executive-
Chairman, I think we're going into recess.
Recession, not adjourn, yes, thank you. So I need a motion to recess. Thank you. So move.
That's my motion.
Be reconvening for executive session.
Yep. Do I do that now, or?
No, just the whole thing, yeah.
Okay, yeah. We will be back, meeting in executive session. Alrighty. Olivia, roll call vote.
Bender?
Aye.
Barth?
Yes.
Benega?
Aye.
Hi Berger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Motion is approved unanimously? That's a tough word. We'll meet in 10 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.